All right, welcome everyone. Carol, would you like to get started?
Absolutely. Good, are we going to get the full screen then?
Sure.
Good evening, my name is Carol Barry Austin, as at some point you'll see on the screen. And along with my co-chair, Meredith Sue Willis, we welcome you all on behalf of the Community Coalition on Race. Before we begin with the program, I would like to thank all the candidates that are here with us this evening, and the Schools Committee members who worked so hard on this evening and developed the questions that will be asked. As many of you know, the Schools Committee has focused for several years on issues of integration and equity in our school district. Our goal this evening is to challenge the candidates to consider how school policy affects integration inequity in our schools and classrooms. Candidates will be asked to respond to questions regarding segregated classrooms in schools, the recruiting and retention of a racially and culturally diverse teaching staff, and addressing what many in the community believe to be low expectations for children of color among some of the faculty. These are only a handful of topics that we believe need to be addressed to better understand the contributing factors to the minority achievement gap in our district. Recent events in our country prove that issues of equity and inclusiveness are extremely important. They cannot be ignored. By being here, you are each contributing to the change that starts in our community. Remember to cast your vote on November 3rd. We have the power collectively to create a better future for all of our children. The format for the program this evening is as follows, and thank you in advance. Our Zoom host is Tegan Koller, Coalition on Race trustee. Our timekeeper is Schools Committee Co-Chair Meredith Sue Willis. And our moderator is our Program Director Audrey Rowe. We will begin the evening with Zoom instructions, a slide from Tegan, and then turn the program over to our moderator. Moderator, to begin with opening statements from our candidates, followed by questions to each candidate. We will take questions from the audience using the chat features explained, which will be explained in a few minutes. Each candidate will have the opportunity to give closing remarks, and we will end with comments from our Executive Director Nancy Gagnier. We thank you in advance for your patience as we navigate this virtual experience together. Tegan?
Thank you, Carol, and welcome, everybody. We're delighted that so many of you could join us tonight. I know that many people are very, very familiar with Zoom at this point, but just to give you a few basics, for those of you who don't use it quite as frequently as others, we wanted to give you a little bit of information. So the first thing we'd like to request is that you mute yourself when you are not speaking. So if we could ask you to use the, I'm going to share with you some information about the controls here. And if we could ask that you use the controls on the bottom, along the bottom, you'll see a microphone at the left. That microphone is your mute button. If you click it and you see a line through it, then you are muted. We'd like to ask that you keep your camera on to encourage a community feel, if you can. We know it's not always possible, but next to the microphone, you'll see a video camera. Please do turn on your video camera where it says "Start Video." And then we're going, so there's your mute button there. There is your video icon, and then in the center, you'll see the chat, which is a comment bubble. And I'll speak more about how you might use the chat in just a minute. Before we get there, though, I'd like to remind you that this forum is being recorded, and by joining us this evening, you are automatically consenting to the recording. In terms of our procedures, as Carol mentioned, we'll be starting with opening statements, and then we'll be doing some randomly assigned questions from our moderator. When we open up to comments from the floor, we'd like to offer you the opportunity to submit your questions via chat. Now, there was a miscommunication, that an automatic setting from Zoom that invited many of you to submit your questions directly to Nancy Gagnier. That is a Zoom hiccup. We apologize for that. If you submitted a question to Nancy Gagnier, we do not have it in advance, so we are going to ask you to please submit it once again when we get to the open session for questions from the floor. You're welcome to submit your questions at any point during the presentations tonight. We'd actually prefer if you submit them along the way, because we'll be sorting them. It will be easier if they don't all come to once. They will come directly to me. So please send your questions in a private chat, and the way that you do that is you center on that comment bubble in the center of the bottom of your screen, which I mentioned previously. And when you pull that up, you'll get a list that says "Send Chat To," and the default is "Everyone." If you click on it, you'll see, as it appears here, that you are able to then move it to a list of everybody who's in the room, and please find my name, Tegan Koller. Alternatively, you can mouse over my picture, and at the three dots in the upper right-hand corner, you can choose to chat me from there. One thing that we do require, however, is that if you are submitting a question, you must be logged in with your full name for accountability reasons. So if we could ask you, if you don't have your full name, if you have a company's name, partner's name, or as often happens to me in these days of virtual schooling, a child's name on your Zoom name, please go ahead and change your name now. And the way that you're going to do that is you're going to find your image. You're going to go to those three dots in the upper right-hand corner, and when you click on them, you'll get a series of options. One of those is "Rename." Just click on that, type your name into the box that you get, and there, poof, you have your name. One last thing is, as you're submitting questions, please note that your questions are for the entire slate of candidates. You may not direct your questions to one individual. Okay, and with that, I'd like to turn things back over. Carol, is there anything that I missed that we should add? You're muted?
Nope, you were perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tegan, for those clear and complete instructions. I'm Audrey Rowe, for everyone's information, and we thank you for joining us this evening. And now is the time when we allow our candidates to give their opening statements, and we're going to start alphabetically by their last names. There are five of our six candidates available, and I will be reading the statement for Kamal Zubietta. Let's start now, if we can, with Susan Lewis Bergen.
Thank you. Thank you to the Schools Committee for hosting tonight, and thank you all for tuning in. My name is Susan Bergen, and I'm pleased to be running on a slate with Courtney Winkfield, who's also here tonight. I've had kids in our district for 10 years. My big kids went to Marshall and Jefferson. They're now at Columbia and MMS. My little guy starts kindergarten next year in the first class of our elementary integration plan. So I have been through many ages and stages in our district, and I'm about to start all over again. My commitment to equity has always been a driving force behind my work. I was a healthcare lawyer at a big New York law firm. I've worked in legal services and also served as a CASA, a court-appointed special advocate for youth and foster care. I advocated as fiercely for the children on my caseload as I do for my own children. If elected, I will work for all our children with that level of care and attention. I have a track record of making a concrete difference in the lives of our students and families. I've always tried to make our schools a place where all students are included and all students get what they need, because that's how we set our students up to thrive. As a result of my initiatives, no student is turned away in the lunch line for a lack of funds in our district. Maplewood is now offering free Wi-Fi in the Seth Boyden neighborhood, and 20% more Columbia seniors a year are able to go to prom and attend other senior year rites of passage. I'm running to bring my dedication, experience, and skillset to the board to have a broader impact. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan. Now we'll move to the opening statement from Deborah Engel.
Hi, I'm Deborah Engel. I'm a mom to three kids in elementary school, a local business owner, a professional communicator, and a community volunteer. This past spring and summer, I spent advocating for small businesses and independent contractors and helped them navigate the state and federal funding programs that came available. I am now running for Board of Education, because I believe my background and experience in strategic communications and my ability to foster innovation and creativity in others will be a true asset to our board as we continue to navigate this pandemic and look towards implementing the integration plan. Through all my work in the community, I have proven that I am an active listener who collaborates with others to find solutions that all can get behind. I am used to wading through tons of information, dissecting it, and reporting it back to our community. I am a community builder and I'm a doer. I'm not afraid to use my voice or have an opinion, and I will show up and do the work. I look forward to sharing more about me with you this evening.
Thank you, Deborah. Now we'll move to Melanie Finnan.
Hi, I'm Melanie. Thank you to everybody who organized, and to my fellow candidates, and to all of you for joining tonight. It's great to see so many passionate people wanting what's best for the kids in our district, and we're all meeting from the same common goal, that we just want to help our kids. And there are many ways to do that. For me, the way forward is to support the superintendent and hold him accountable to execute the policy the board sets forth. And a lot of people are going to sit here tonight and tell you their grand plans, but I'd like to remind you that personal interests and goals are not the role of the board. Right now, we're lacking outcomes. Why won't the current board hold anyone accountable? Why is there such a large achievement gap? Why is our curriculum out of compliance? I know as a parent, you ask yourself this, and I ask myself this too, and that's why I'm running. We need more members to drive progress, not to do the work of special interest groups. We are such an innovative community. That's why we all live here. We're on the cusp of cutting-edge ideas, and nothing's getting done. So I want to be a part of the Board of Ed to help move us forward.
Thank you, Melanie. Now let's move to Alyssa Malaspina.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alyssa Malaspina, and I'd like to thank the CCR for hosting this debate, and thank you all for attending virtually. About 60% of our tax dollars go to the schools, so your engagement is incredibly important. I am a 26-year resident, year resident of South Orange, and have worked in public education for 20 years as a classroom teacher, librarian, technology integrator, and as a supervisor, and continue to speak nationally about education and proper integration in schools. I spent nine years serving as a librarian at Columbia High School and South Orange Middle School before leaving to pursue a supervisory role in another district, and I have been a constant presence as an outspoken advocate before the board. My son is a senior at Columbia High School, and my husband is a proud graduate of SOMSD. I have seen the best and the worst of the district has to offer as an employee, parent, and taxpayer. I am running for Board of Education, because I believe we can do a better job of serving the needs of all of our students and their families.
Thank you, Alyssa. And now let's hear from Courtney Winkfield.
Hi, thank you. I'm really, really grateful to the Schools Committee for the Community Coalition on Race for hosting us tonight, and for the community who's joined us. My name is Courtney Winkfield, and I'm running with the incredible Susan Bergen. I'm a resident of South Orange, and I live here with my husband and our two children, both of whom who attend Jefferson this year. I have been an educator for over 16 years in the New York City Department of Education. I've been a middle school and high school teacher, a principal of a 6-12 school, a leadership coach, and my current role, I develop strategies to ensure equity policies have the kind of impact we want them to have and impact all 1.1 million students in New York. I oversee the AP for All Initiative, where we have increased access and participation in AP by over 40% in four years. As a parent and educator, I have followed the work of the district extremely closely, and although our work varies in lots of different ways, I was struck by the similarities between the problems I've worked to solve in my whole career and the problems we're solving here in Soma tonight.
Thank you so much. And unfortunately, our candidate Kamel Zubietta could not be with us, but I will now read her statement and hopefully get it in in the one minute that's allowed. I'm running for the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education, because I am for all children. I believe that with love, care, and opportunity, all children can aim high and win. I am inspired by the bravery of students and support them in changing the very nature of the United States. Because of their advocacy for social justice, I am certain that in my lifetime, the American dream will come to include everyone. I'm deeply invested in the South Orange Maplewood School District. I've lived in Maplewood for 16 years. Two of my daughters currently attend Columbia High School, and one graduated in June. I currently serve on the Board of Education and bring a fresh multicultural perspective to the conversation. I am the daughter of Sikh immigrants and the wife of a Chilean immigrant. I speak English, Punjabi, and Spanish. Our district is diverse, and the demographics are in flux. Homogeneity does not serve our children well, be it in the overall school mix, class composition, administration, teaching staff, or Board of Education. I believe in integrating our schools and promoting a culture of inclusion, love, and kindness. Separate is not equal, so in June, I voted yes on the Intentional Integration Initiative. It is time for our school district to become a leader in civil rights for districts across the state of New Jersey. It is our duty and moral obligation to comply with Access and Equity Policy 5755.1.1, adopted in October 2015, and other important supporting policies. All of our children must receive equal importance, irrespective of race, equity, nationality, religion, sex, gender, and identity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just so that the audience knows, our rule is, once time is called, the person is allowed to finish that sentence, but not that thought or concept, but the sentence. So thank you for whoever was assisting. And now we're going to move on from the opening statements to the actual questions of the candidates. This year, the candidates did not receive the questions in advance, and the questions have been randomly selected to be directed to the various candidates. The first question will be for Susan Lewis Bergen, and the question is, in your opinion, has a district done enough to address the digital divide during distance learning with free Wi-Fi hotspots and Chromebooks? What impact do you think distance learning will have on the academic achievement gap the district is already struggling with? Susan?
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to get this question, because I have been thinking a lot about the digital divide. It's something that's been with us since before the pandemic, and the pandemic has really shined a light on this issue and brought it to the forefront of everyone's thinking. In 2019, I was working on the digital divide locally in our school district. When Maplewood announced its first participatory budget contest and invited proposals for how to spend a small pot of township money, I wrote the winning proposal for a free neighborhood Wi-Fi pilot program around the Seth Boyden neighborhood. And it was put to a vote, and Maplewood residents voted on this proposal. In the last year, the Township of Maplewood was implementing that program, and there were some bumps in the road, both technologically, in terms of how to set it up, and in terms of outreach. It turned out to be a very labor-intensive process. But I'm pleased to say that families are currently using this program in the Seth Boyden neighborhood, and there's a lot more capacity there for it. And it's become a great partnership of the school district and the town. So I think that we have a long ways to go, but with this program and what we've learned from it, and the initiative is already in the district for loaning hotspots and Wi-Fi and Chromebooks, we have the potential to work very, very well towards closing the digital divide. I do think that I see stop go up, that the academic achievement gap is going to be an even greater issue. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Susan. Our process is that whoever receives the questions has up to a minute and a half to respond. And then each of the other candidates will have a minute to either respond or to pass. So now that Susan's finished her response, let's give a minute now. We'll check with Deborah and see if you'd like to respond to that same question. You have a minute.
I would, thank you. I think the district has done a good job in helping out with the digital divide, with both that grant that Susan was a part of, and giving Chromebooks out to every student that needs one in the district. But I do believe that we are creating more inequities in our district right now with remote learning, in that we don't have asynchronous options for those who need it. I think it's really hard to consider these students who are home, who don't have a parent to help them, or have multiple people on the computers at the same time, and the Wi-Fi is not strong enough, and they're just not going to be able to the ability to do school the same way as some other students, as well as some kids just can't learn asynchronous all the time. And parents are asking for asynchronous options for those students who are not able to be on a screen for four, five, six hours at a time.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Melanie, would you like to respond to that particular question?
Would like to respond, thank you. I agree. I think we've done a great job getting everybody in the district what they need in terms of laptops and hotspots. I agree, we are not offering an asynchronous, even though there was a huge push for synchronous options last spring, myself included. That being said, we need to make the options available for those who can't log on during the day. But aside from that, there were these grand plans in the summer, in August, at the Town Hall, that we were going to roll out a consistent curriculum across the district. And already, we're seeing the administration like kowtow on their plan before it's even fully executed. So of course, we're widening the gap, because kids in different schools are learning different things. There was an issue two weeks ago at Marshall that wasn't at Clinton. I mean, how are we going to keep the kids learning consistently and keep the gap small when there's just no communication about what's being taught in each school?
Thank you, Melanie. Alyssa, would you like to respond?
Sure. I'm actually uniquely qualified to discuss this, because I have been part of the Librarians Task Force, the New Jersey Future Ready Librarians Task Force on this. I am working with the state of New Jersey right now and have worked on writing their digital plans. And so it is something that I've been passionate about for years. I'm actually speaking at ISTI about the idea of the digital divide and the idea of information privilege equity, which is the idea that our children don't always get the same information, which is what, you know, we have been talking about in curriculum at the same time. So our kids might not be getting as much, you know, library time as they should be, or getting the information they need to, or access to databases or resources. And we have addressed the needs right now, but we have not addressed those issues, the curricular issues that go along with that. We have an information privilege gap in our district, and we need to make sure we fix that. And sorry, my mom had to call me right now in the middle of it, and I forgot to turn it off. So I believe we have to fix that, and we also need to do more in terms of one-to-one technology.
Thank you so much, Alyssa. And now our last weighing in on this top question is Courtney Winkfield.
Yes. You know, what I would like to add is that much of what we're seeing, not only in South Orange, but across the country, is, you know, in a time of a crisis, like the pandemic we're experiencing, is often a time where disparities that have existed for a very long time really just come into the light in a way where the larger community can see what's been happening. And so while I think that there are really specific nuances that a lot of my colleagues have spoken about around, you know, specific issues around technology, you know, the issue that I hope we get a bigger chance to talk about tonight is what's happening with many of our special education students during this pandemic. And I think, you know, the goal of equity at its most essential level is to ensure that resources are distributed based on the specific needs of our students. And right now, I think that we can do a better job of really ensuring, both during this time and when we return to in-person learning eventually, that we create support for our students who need them the most to ensure that they get what they need to be able to thrive now and when we return in person.
Thank you so much, Courtney. Now we'll move on to our second question, and the person will have a minute and a half to respond, followed by a minute from the other candidates. This question's directed to Deborah, Deborah Engel, and the question is, other than visiting or recruiting from historically black colleges, what strategies and/or policies would you recommend for diversifying the district teaching staff further? Deborah?
I'm so happy that I got this question, because I have noticed as a parent that there are just not, there is just not a lot of diversity in the teaching staff, at least at our elementary school. I can think of only one black teacher and no male teachers at all on the employee staff. And so I do think that we need to look at how we are recruiting our teachers, and where we're recruiting our teachers, and how we could add more diversity into our classrooms. I know this is not just a unique issue in our community. I've read that it's happening other places as well, but we need to really focus on it so that our teaching staff looks like our children, and so that we create role models for all of our children. I think that one idea is to bring our paraprofessionals back in-house and look to see how we can grow some of our paraprofessionals into teachers on our staff, because I see how our pairs work with the children, and we have some really dedicated, really amazing teachers, women, and people who can then, you know, maybe grow into teachers. So I am, that is one of the issues that I want to look at when I am, if I am elected to the board, is to look at where we're recruiting right now, where we can expand that reach, and how we can also evaluate why teachers are leaving, or why we can't retain talent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ed, can you mute? Let's move now to Melanie to respond to that same question.
Hi, thank you. Listen, I can't sit up here and pretend that I know how to recruit teachers, because I don't. But I also know, like, how to say something is a good idea and something's a bad idea when it comes to the board via the professionals whose job that is. I think we have, I mean, look, our greatest asset is our diversity in this town, right? It's also our greatest weakness. And so the fact that we don't have teachers that reflect our students is like a real disgrace. In Clinton, I can think of only one teacher specifically who's not white, and then honestly, the rest of the staff is like the lunch aids. So we do, I think this is part of the integration and the diversity, and even the way we evaluate our teachers, I think we should be looking at who our teachers are, where we can open up and hire more and bring in. Look, we clearly need more staff in our schools, whether it's to be support staff to help the students who are not getting the services that they need, and maybe we should be bringing in more diverse staff to fill in those gaps.
Okay. Alyssa, what do you think on this issue?
So this is something I'm really passionate about also, because as a supervisor, I was in charge of hiring staff. So one of the great things that we can do is, there were programs out there, and when in the district I was in, which was in Parsippany, they had a program that recruited teachers from within, in our classrooms, within our schools. So as soon as the kids would come back, they would be mentored in the schools, their senior year, and then they would follow around a teacher. And then when they would come back to the schools, what would happen is they would check on the application that they were a part of this program. So we had to interview those students. We had to at least give them an interview to at least try to, you know, see if they matched what we were doing. And promoting from within, what is better than having students become the teachers? They know the schools, they know the classrooms, they know the community. So we don't have a program like that here, and it is something we need to have. We are going to, the lawsuit requires that the district does recruit from historic colleges. So that will be happening.
Okay, Courtney?
Yeah, I think there's another reason that often leads to this sort of pattern of outcome that exists in school systems across the country, and that is the inherent bias that exists in hiring practices. You know, this is something that I experienced firsthand as a principal, as I saw that pattern perpetuate itself, not only in that staff that I inherited when I took over the school, but in some of my own hiring practices. And we set off on a journey as a school community to really unpack the biases that we were bringing to that process, to really begin to understand how that influenced who we selected for an interview, who we ultimately pushed through to put into a classroom, and made a really conscious effort to disrupt some of those biases in some of the decisions we made. And over the last several years, in my current role, I've coached principals, I've coached superintendents, and have helped teams of educators really put systems in place to not only understand how those patterns of bias persist in hiring, but also put really concrete professional learning plans in place to ensure that those patterns do not persist, and that we can make hires that ultimately reflect the diverse communities that we serve.
Thank you, Courtney. And last on this issue, Susan, Susan Lewis Bergen.
Thank you. I just want to take a step back and talk about why it is so important that our teaching staff reflect our student population. Right now, only 13% of our teachers are black, and research shows that when students see themselves reflected in the teaching staff, they perform better, students of color, and especially for boys. And right now, our teaching staff is 3/4ths white and 3/4ths female, which does not mirror our population at all. And I think that this is one of the many things that we need to address in thinking about making our elementary integration plan work next year, when we talk about having the demographics of each school reflect the population of the entire district. I think we also need to look at having the demographics of the teaching staff mirror those as well. And I understand that the board sets the what, and in the current goal setting, diversifying the And I understand that the board sets the what, and in the current goal setting, diversifying the teaching staff is one of the goals for the district. And the district figures out the how. Um, I just wanted to add to the other suggestions that looking at retain, not only looking at hiring, but also looking at retention of teachers is something else that we should be looking at.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to our third question, which will be directed to Melanie Finern. And here's the question. What do you envision as effective, fair, and equitable school safety and security practices for students in our schools? What is your position on police or other law enforcement presence in the schools? Melanie?
So I do not believe we have police officers in our school. I think that's something that's been addressed in the past, and it's not a situation anymore. I think we need to be doing the prep work to make sure that our kids are the safest they can be possible in the schools. And so I know there are issues with active shooter drills and we have fire drills and and who knows what we're going to have post, post COVID school, like who knows what that's going to look like. But we just have to, in the most gentle way possible, make sure we're setting up the safest place for our children to be when they're not with us. So, you know, in terms of taking police officers down, I I don't believe we have police officers in our school anymore. They might be outside the school, they might be helping with street crossings, but they're not roaming around the buildings and making it unsafe for our children. Nor do I think they should be.
Okay, Melanie. Let's have a response from Alyssa.
Sure. Um, SROs are not in the school. The school district has made it very clear that they will not be in our schools and we do not have them in their schools. But there are times, as required by law, that by the memo of agreement between the state and the school district, where police have to be in the schools, i.e. um monitoring drills and other types of things that they must come into the schools for. We can't outlaw that. But I do believe that both the students and police benefit from times when they can interact with students in positive ways. I've seen that as an educator. Open gym at Maplewood that they ran at Columbia High School, where the Maplewood PD ran, was it's successful and the students really enjoyed that. We must look for ways to continue the community policing efforts since studies have shown that they lead to positive results. That does not mean they need to be in the schools, but that means that we have to look for ways that we can bridge that gap and try to lead to instances where the community and the police are worked together as much as possible. In terms of some of the other things, I am on, I have been on the Columbia High School uh School Safety Committee. It is something that I'm there, I have advocated for for years and I will continue to advocate for because I believe that no one should feel unsafe in our buildings. And there's been a number of times in the last few years where we have instances where they have felt unsafe. So I, you know, I, being an educator, I have the background that is needed to help to change some of these things.
Thank you, Alyssa. Courtney, what is your perspective?
I'm not in favor of SROs being stationed in our schools. And as somebody um who for years was legally responsible for over a thousand people's children on a daily basis, safety is something that I take incredibly seriously. Uh, but I also think it's really important that when we talk about safety, we're also talking about social emotional safety and talking about the kind of structures and systems that we need to invest in across pre-K to twelve here in SOMA that ensure that we don't continue to perpetuate punitive responses to discipline that ultimately lead to uh incredibly negative outcomes from our students, make them uh more removed from the community and make them ultimately feel less connected and less safe in their own school communities. I would like to see SOMA institute a comprehensive restorative justice program that is well-funded and well-supported, starting in our elementary school grades, so that we can offer up a real, robust and sustainable system for us as a community to solve problems in a more constructive, collaborative and different way.
Thank you so much for that. Susan, your perspective?
Um, thank you. I um do not support putting police or SROs or any armed guards in our schools under any circumstances. I think that it can lead to the criminalization of behavior that the school should be in a position to handle. And in terms of the drills that we do, I realize that some are required by law. Um, but I also think we need to listen to the recent guidance by the American Academy of Pediatrics. A few months ago, they came out with a statement recommending that students not participate in the active shooter drills because they haven't been shown to be effective. And um the participation can lead to so much stress and anxiety in the students. They also recommended allowing students to receive accommodations during those drills and only participate if they've explicitly opted in and consented. And the American Academy of Pediatrics also stressed the importance of um prevention. And I would like the district to implement um a security drill policy that aligns with the law in New Jersey and also um with the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Thank you, Susan. Deborah Engel, you have the last word?
Thanks. Um, I agree that I don't believe in police or any armed security in our school. And I also agree when you're looking at safety and security, you need to be thinking about the emotional um means of a child as well. And it seems like um with the active shooter drills, I know that a lot of children can't handle that, especially with younger children, especially with children. And it seems like um when when you ask for plans, everything's on a reactionary basis, on a case-by-case basis. And there's no consistent policy across the board um about what those plans are to 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 support these children. So while they are mandated by the state and I own the childcare center and we had to do that with our kids, you know, three-year-old kids and hide in the bathroom, they're mandated by the state, I think that um I agree, we should look at other ways and we should be having some kind of consistent policy across all of our schools so that we know that our children who don't have the mental capacity to handle these drills are taken care of.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the fourth of our six total questions that we have this evening. Uh, this question will go to Alyssa Malaspina, and it reads, "Do you support the study of Black and Hispanic history along with other marginalized groups and a culturally responsive and inclusive curriculum at all grade levels in the day-to-day teaching in our district rather than as an occasional or periodic addition? If yes, what steps would you suggest to be more inclusive? If no, why not?"
So I was a history teacher in my prior prior life a long time ago. And um this is something I am extremely passionate about and believe that we must have inclusive curriculums that, you know, incorporate all races, gender, ethnicity in them. The state of New Jersey has has recently added that we have to have LGBTQ curriculum as part of the schools. We have not fully, I have not seen that implemented fully like it should be in our in our curriculums, but it has to be there. We have to have the Amistad curriculum in there. We had to fight the district to make sure that that happened. We still, we just now got a elementary curriculum that doesn't have the slave auctions as part of it. I mean, it took years for that to happen, and that shouldn't have been the case. The, we have to do better with our curriculum. Our curriculum curriculum has had many issues. It was um out of compliance for a number of years. And we have to work on fixing it and making it so that it is inclusive. And that we, you know, we can, our curriculum has been so largely whitewashed that it's critical that our curriculum be revised to include the, you know, include LGBTQ biopic as required by law. We can't, we can't continue to do what we have been doing in our district. We need to listen to the students. They came and they said that the textbook wasn't good. They went to administration and administration didn't listen to them. And we still have that textbook in place right now. That can't happen. We have to change those things.
Thank you. Courtney Winkfield, would you like to weigh in on this topic?
Absolutely. Yeah, this is something that I'm extremely passionate about and something that I want to offer is that every curricula is responsive to someone. The question we have to ask ourselves in this community is who has our curriculum been responsive to for so many years? And if we, if we want to really create the kind of cultures in our school communities that live out our values of fairness and justice, we have to make a real commitment to ensure that our students do not only see mirrors, but they also see windows as they experience their their instructional experience here in SOMA. You know, I think it's one thing that's really important to note is that we could have the most culturally responsive curricula in the entire nation. And if we do not invest in our teachers and support them through ongoing professional learning, we are going to be handing over tools that our teachers are not going to be equipped to fully use. And in the worst cases, uh that misuse can actually cause harm to our young people. So I think it's really important that we make sure that we're not only making an investment in creating a culturally responsive curriculum, but we're also creating culturally competent and critical, critically conscious educators to be able to implement that curriculum.
Thank you. Susan Lewis Bergen, your response, please.
Thank you. Um, yes, I do support uh the teaching of um Black history and Hispanic history. And um I wanted to point out that in the July presentation to the board by Dr. by Dr. Taylor, he noted deficiencies in these areas. It's part of the comprehensive equity plan, and they're slated to be rectified by this spring. And as a board member, I would be very much on top of that and um, you know, monitor that closely and make sure that that really did happen. And I think that it's really in terms of how to how to be more inclusive. I think it's really important that this history be um centered as part of the main lessons in the curriculum and not be something that's tacked on separately in a separate unit or as a separate month or something like some special project. I think that's to be part of everything that we do in teaching and that this is another one of those things that's important to do for the success of the elementary integration program.
Thank you. Deborah Engel, your response?
Yes, I believe that it's important um to have this in our curriculum. Um, I am mortified and sad that I received such a whitewashed history education um growing up, and I do not want my kids to not learn about our real history as I did it, as I'm learning as an adult. Um, so I think it's imperatively important that it is part of our curriculum. Um, and I do think it needs to be interwoven and it should not just be an add-on, as Susan was saying. And I think it also goes back to our teachers about how we need to be recruiting more multicultural teachers to be teaching curriculum. Um, both, you know, for for their own classrooms, but to work with their their colleagues as a team and so that they can work together through professional development so that everybody's teaching it in a um good way in the classrooms. Because we've seen there's a lot of inconsistency within the teaching. And I think when you're teaching about Black history or Hispanic history, um, it's it's different from someone like me, a white woman who hasn't lived it and didn't learn it than it is from here from someone who has a more personal experience.
Thank you. Uh, the next response and the last on this topic, I believe, is Melanie Finern.
So it is 2020. I mean, if we are not going to start incorporating it out, when is it ever going to happen? Just like our staff doesn't mirror our 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 um community, our curriculum's not mirroring our community, and we should be learning about everybody and the past of everybody that lives in this district. We should be having a diverse curriculum that is not just heavy on one or two histories, but on everything that is relevant to us, right? And that includes current events. We should really be adding current events into our current curriculum. And, you know, so much of what's happening is relevant right now. So much of history is happening literally right now, and we should be teaching it. And we should be having the teachers and the staff who are diverse and, you know, and and can and can teach from all different perspectives that curriculum that we need in place.
Okay. Uh, the next question, our fifth question, is uh directed to Courtney Winkfield. And the question is, you have an hour of one and a half minutes, not an hour, to respond. The question is, how would you address the concerns of current and past students about comments from teachers and or guidance counselors who discourage their aspirations?
I'm so glad you asked about this, uh, because as I was considering joining the the Race for Board of Education, I spent a lot of time this summer reading the um Black at SOMSD Instagram handle. And uh there was a lot of familiarity in that. Uh, and these are conversations that I've had with students in our community here in SOMA and conversations I've had with my students in New York City. Um, and I think many of you on this call probably have your own experience of being underestimated by a teacher or being discouraged from pursuing an opportunity. And uh these are life-changing moments in the life of our young people when their full potential and their full brilliance is not realized and not being given uh the opportunities to succeed. The reasons why we have, um, I'm not going to call it the achievement gap, but the opportunity gap in much of the data that we've seen here um in recent weeks, in particular with the release of the AP enrollment data from the last uh couple of years, is that uh we have a pervasive crisis in our community around um deficit thinking about the potential for so many of our young people here. I think that we need a multi-tiered approach. We need to um make a real, true commitment to studying the barriers that have persisted for generations, that have kept many of our Black and Brown students out of higher courses. And that doesn't just start with AP. We need to go back all the way to the messages our kids receive in elementary school and in middle school and really, really make a commitment to removing the barriers, not just in programming, but the barriers that many adults put in front of our young people that keep them from realizing their potential and their brilliance.
Thank you. Now I'll go to each of our other candidates, giving you each in a minute to respond, starting with Susan Bergen.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I I also read the Black at SOMSD Instagram account. And it was just so painful to listen to the stories. And I'm so glad that the students had that forum to share that those experiences with adults. And I think it's really important that we listen to them. I could talk about teacher training, but, you know, there's some things that you think you you shouldn't need to train someone in. I think that it's important that we understand the barriers to um accessing this, not just AP classes, but, you know, the the entire plethora of options at the high school and in the other schools and work to remove the barriers to access. One of those barriers is the summer math class having a fee. Um, it's the 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 class that you basically have to take if you want to jump ahead a level in math and take the most advanced math classes has a fee. And it's waived for students who receive free and reduced lunch, but we also all know that there's a big gap between people who qualify for free and reduced lunch and people who have the disposable income to spend on a summer math class. Um, I think we need to look really carefully at all of those sorts of barriers. Another one that I have, I've seen.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to Deborah to respond.
Thank you. Um, I think there needs to be specific guidelines, processes and accountability when it comes to discrimination. Um, and there, it goes back to communication as well. There needs to be clear effect, clear and effective communication channels for parents or students to report any biases they feel that are coming to them. Um, I'd be interested in looking at the data. I know there's some new programs that the district has launched, including the mixed-level classes this fall. And I'd be curious to see the data, if it helps students who may not already be up in the honors classes, if it helps them move up. I'd be curious to see what happens with that. And this goes back also to the teacher evaluation. I think we need to make sure that we're evaluating our teachers and that we're talking to our teachers. Um, if, and we're seeing if there's any trends or patterns among the individuals. Again, there needs to be better communication. Um, I believe that people can report on what is happening to them.
Okay, Melanie?
I actually just want to understand why this is still happening. I mean, this has been an issue for years and years, and yet it's still an issue at this debate. And it's still an issue that we all talk about every day. And why is it not getting done? I want to know why teachers aren't held accountable for things that they do. I want to know why we talk about this every year and their brand plans talked about every year. We have an evaluation framework in place. There need to be repercussions on that framework. We need to be watching to make sure things are getting done. Of course, nothing's changing because we can talk about it and debate about it, but until it actually gets executed, nothing's going to change.
Okay. And lastly, Melissa.
Um.
Alyssa, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, I agree with everything Melanie said. These have been issues we've been talking about for years. It was upsetting to read the, what we read, but I'm not shocked. Being an educator in the district, I saw these things firsthand. I had kids come to me upset when guidance counselors and others did that. And it, I was hoping that after I left, it had changed, but it hasn't. And those, and everything shows that. Now, the students have written a bill of rights. And in it, they have said that they want to, they want guidance counselors that engage in discussions with students at the center and their needs and desires are taken care of when it comes to choices. No child should ever be told that they cannot take a class or that if you're an athlete, I fought this with my son, that if you're an athlete, oh, you should take the easier classes. That was said to my son and to all of the students at South Orange Middle School not too long ago, that just take the easier classes. When I heard that, I was so upset. That can't come. And that was from the head of guidance at the time.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, and now this last question will be directed to each of you. You will each have a minute and a half to respond. And it reads, "The district's intentional integration initiative is a good first step to integrating our elementary schools. But in spite of the existing access and equity policy classes at our middle and high schools continue to be largely segregated. What policies would you propose to integrate classrooms in our secondary schools?" Let's start with Courtney.
I love this question because I think it really speaks to a core value that I hold with respect to my beliefs about education. I started a school in 2006 and made a commitment to have heterogeneous classes across every grade in the school. And we offered advanced courses along the way. We offered a robust offering of AP courses. And those AP courses were offered to each and every student regardless of GPA, regardless of past performance in their courses, and regardless of their special education or English language learner status. That is the kind of commitment that we need to first and foremost make here in the district, that no child should be shut out from taking advanced courses, electives, any course of their choosing based on past performance, based on special status. But I think that we need to keep in mind the idea that without intentional systems and structures to ensure that our classrooms remain as integrated as our larger school community, we know that academic segregation will persist as the default. And so I think we need to have a robust policy, in particular in our six to 12 grade bands, that ensures intentional and careful, not just racial or socioeconomic placement, but intentional placement of students of different abilities because research shows that having these classrooms better supports students of all levels.
Thank you so much, Courtney. Let's move now to Alyssa Malaspina.
Um, actually, we do need to change things and we have to recruit up. Our kids do not, the curriculum that our students are getting right now in our lower level college classes, our college prep classes, are not the same curriculum that they are getting in the honors and AP classes. But the way we have been taught as educators is that you teach that curriculum, but you just teach it at a lower pace, smaller, slower pace. But kids should all have the same curriculum. That is not happening. We need to put the supports in place to help these students move up and succeed. And the supports in place right now at the middle and high school are after school. A lot of our kids are during lunch. I'm sorry, I have a high schooler. My high schooler wants to go out for lunch. My high schooler does not want to stay after school if he doesn't have a ninth period. He, that is not the answer. We need to have supports in place during the day. We need to have unified curriculum. We need that, we need the curriculum to be taught in a way that it is accessible to all students. And we have to make it so that our students are are feel welcome and they're recruited to take part in the AP classes, that it's not, there's no barriers in place. The lawsuit has done that. The lawsuit I was a part of allows for these things to start happening. We need to make sure that we implement them. We had an access inequity, we had access inequity policy in place. It was never enforced. We have to change that.
Thank you so much, Alyssa. Now let's move to Melanie.
The access inequity document was adopted in 2016, 2017. And so we're three years into it and we're still not meeting any of these goals. The integration plan is like a really big opportunity for our community to get it right, right? We're going to integrate the schools. It's so necessary. My kids are in Clinton. I have two little kids. I love our community. I'm so thankful to be a part of Clinton. And I do think our town should represent that. But our school buildings, our curriculum, our communications, everything else is subpar. So we have to integrate, but then make sure everything else doesn't, I'm going to say bad words, so I'm going to stop myself, but like doesn't fall to pieces so that we can get our act together and be the diverse, like next level community that we are. That's why we all moved here. We are like on the cutting edge here and we just can't get there. Integrating the schools is not the be all end all. We have to work on everything else to make sure once we're integrated, everybody is learning top-notch, receiving the services they need.
Thank you, Melanie. Let's move to Deborah Engel.
I think that virtual learning gives us an opportunity to do a lot of new things. And this goes back to create, thinking creatively and innovating. Because while we talk about creating, having virtual learning mimic a regular school day for when they go back to school, there's nothing regular about what we're going through right now. And because we are virtual, we have all this opportunity with technology in front of us to start integration earlier. I would like to see the Parenting Center or other programs in the district roll out some stuff in the spring to start integrating our kids. Perhaps it it can test the algorithm even that they're going to use in the in the integration plan next fall. But some 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 unique and and creative ways to start getting our kids together who may not be together. We're not, we're not, we're not, we don't need our school buildings right now in order to do school. We're doing it from home with no information about what's happening with our facilities and no work being done. I'm I get worried that we're not even going to come back to school this year. So I think we need to start innovatively and creatively of what we can be doing now. I also think we should look at the timeline because we're in a pandemic and see if we can move some of it up. Do we need to only start with kindergarten next year or we can start with K and first if the kids won't have that school community and won't be tied to a building? And I am so curious to know what the plan is to integrate our middle schools and how that's going to work in sixth grade. And do we need to wait to 2022 or can we start in 2021?
Thank you so much, Deborah. And the last response comes from Susan Bergen.
Thank you. The AP data is so devastating. And we had a recent presentation that showed that the percentage of Black students taking AP classes has actually decreased in the last couple of years rather than increased under the access inequity policy. And I don't think there's any magic answer to how to change that. I think we need to have like a multifaceted approach to that. One of the things I had mentioned earlier, removing the financial barriers to the summer school programs. Another idea I have is putting a support teacher for students with IEPs and AP classes. Right now, the lack of a support teacher is cited to students as a reason not to sign up for an AP class. And that's just unacceptable. Other things that we've talked about today that I I hope would also work towards this with the integration, the hiring a diverse teaching staff that so that students have racial mirrors in the teaching staff, providing academic support. And if it is after school, looking at the option of a jitney. I think the Guidance Office has raised the issue of students who live far from CHS having higher tardy rates on rainy days and higher absentee rates and not staying around for after-school activities. If we had a jitney that could help get them home after they stayed for these activities, I think that it would it would help more students become more a part of the community and access those supports.
Thank you so much. And I would like to thank all of the candidates for honoring the system. I think you've done an excellent job and our debates at the federal level could really take some tips from you guys. We're writing pretty much right on time. And so now we're going to move into opportunities to take questions from you, those of you who've taken time to join us. There are 157 of us tonight. And so what we're asking you to do to remind you, you should be sending your questions to Tegan via the chat. Tegan's going to be scanning through all of those questions and coming up with trends and finding a representative question that she will then send to me through the chat. I will then direct the person who asked the question to actually ask their own questions. And then each of you will have a minute, each of our candidates will have a minute to respond. I hope that that's clear. Let me just go in and see where we are right now. So looking into the chat, Tegan.
Yes. So Audrey, give me one second. I'm going to bring something into the chat. And then Audrey, as I think that you said, I'm going to also send a direct message to the person whose question it is so they have it in front of them.
Perfect.
So, one moment.
So as you begin to speak, once I call your name to to read your own question, the camera will seize your face. So hopefully you'll be on the screen and we can all see you.
Okay, Audrey, why don't you start with our first question and turn it over to the person who asked it?
Okay, our first question is from Anwessa, Anwessa Paul. And do I actually read the question, Tegan, or should they read their own question?
Let's invite Anwessa to read their own question.
Okay, so hopefully, Anwessa, if you will unmute your mic, you should have the question in front of you as well. And if you would read your question, and they will ask each of the candidates to take a minute, up to a minute, to respond. And as before, Sue Willis will keep us honest. Andwessa?
And I think we have Anisha is is our is our questioner's name. I apologize for mispronouncing it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. If you will unmute. Are you with us? Okay, if we don't hear a response in just a minute, we're going to go on, if we can, take into the next question. Hold on a second. Are you there? Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We need to see.
Great. So. Sorry, my, I was joined through my my phone. So thank you so much. This has been really helpful and I'm really glad I joined this this session. The question I had was around communication, more generally just between the administration, the parents and the teachers. Right now, it seems really dysfunctional and I'm, you know, hearing a lot from hers as well as other parents about how they don't know what's going on. They don't get a chance to provide input. And I'm sure the the candidates will ensure that proper input is obtained from both the teachers as well as the parents and how they're going to be told about changes. The teachers will be told about changes before the parents are told about changes and how we as parents and teachers will have transparency about how the decisions are made in the district.
Okay, that completes Anisa's question. Let's direct it first to Susan for one minute to respond.
Thank you. Um, I've had a child in this district for 10 years and communication is an ongoing issue. And I've kind of started to look at it like it's not an issue, it's a symptom of other problems in our district. I don't see it as necessarily a standalone issue. And I think it has a lot to do with trust of the district and like the underlying policies and procedures and how things are done and how decisions are made and the timing of how they're communicated. And so I see improving our communication as the way to do that as working on the processes by which people's input is received by the district and how the district's decision-making is is made. And I I think that if we can improve the trust in the district and around the process of decision-making, that the communication will become less of an issue.
Thank you. Deborah Engel, your response.
Hi, well, I decided to run Board of Education because of the communication flaws I see. I have 15 years' experience in strategic communications marketing to parents. And I just think that they can be doing better. I'll use a specific point in the, when they, when the district changed the K to two schedule a few weeks ago, I could not believe that parents found out at the same time as teachers on a Friday night before a long weekend. Something's broken. I'm not sure why teachers weren't surveyed or were able to give input into that schedule, why they weren't notified. So one of my first things I'd want to do when I, if I elected to the board, is to figure out where these communication channels are broken and how we can fix them. I would also promote giving differentiated communications out to the different audience segments because when the initial plans came out as well, preschoolers and kindergarten parents don't want the same information as high school parents. And the communications were so focused on grades and attendance, but it created more panic in our community. So I think that differentiated communications to the to the different grade levels and ages is really important as well.
Thank you. Melanie Thinner, your response, please.
Um, I don't actually think it's that complicated. Communicate. It's not that hard. I think as stakeholders, all we want to do is be noticed. And beyond us, the teachers, the staff in this community, like how dare they not be informed before the parents? Or what they, how dare they not know what's going to be happening to their daily lives and the way that they teach our kids? It's so grossly unfair. I had a teacher sitting in my backyard this summer who found out that we were going all virtual because she had a student in the district, not because she was a teacher in this district. All we're doing is talking about supporting our staffs, retaining our staff so their curriculum can be taught better. Well, not communicating them with with them is a surefire way to get them to not want to stick around. I think there are ways to keep our stakeholders, ourselves, in mind at all times and to throw them a bone once in a while and say, hey, we're working on things. We promise we're going to let you know soon, but things are tricky with the state. Like I'm going into the virtual learning, right? Like in July, we could have heard a little bit. We're working on a virtual plan. We're working on a hybrid plan. We're not going to release yet. Things are going to change from the state. That probably would have shut the Facebookers up for a little while.
Thank you. Alyssa Malaspina.
Hi, there's a story that that says, there's a saying that says that if you don't tell your story, somebody else will. And it might not be what you want to hear. And we have done such a horrible job telling our own story in the district that oftentimes it has led to others having to tell it for them. And we can do better. We are doing amazing things in this district, but we are not communicating them. And so the story becomes the failures. And teachers should never, never be the ones that find out at the same time that the students do. And they're the ones that are ultimately responsible for implementing these new curriculums and tools. And if they're not as part of the process from the beginning, then nothing's going to change. And we have struggled with communication for so long. I have, you, I'm sort of, I'm uniquely qualified because I do workshops for districts on how to communicate better. And I teach teachers how to communicate better with others. So I know what needs to be done and how we do it. We need to use multiple means. We need to use languages that, you know, the lang, we have to do it in a way that we are meeting the language needs of everybody. We can do it. We just need to do better than we are now.
Thank you. And the last response on this particular question from Courtney Winkfield.
Yeah, I agree with Susan that this is really an underlying issue of trust. But the impact that this lack of communication has, in particular in our educators, is really demoralizing. I have lived firsthand, you know, much of my time this summer has been about learning about my job through press conferences that the mayor holds online and then working with my team to try to make sense of what does that mean for our work? What does that mean for the teachers and the superintendents and the principals that we support? And what does it mean for students ultimately? And at the end of the day, our educators, our leaders, our teachers are moving mountains right now to do what is best for all of our children. And we owe them the respect of not only communicating with them, giving them the courtesy of understanding what's coming up, why a decision was made, but also making sure that their voices are really heard because their voices ultimately reflect the voices of all of our children and that's what's most important.
Thank you so much, Courtney. And thank you, Anisa, for your question. Our second question will come from Jocelyn Ryan. Jocelyn will have the question in front of her. Jocelyn, if you will unmute your mic and if you will read your question for the benefit of all of us. And once again, we will have a minute from each of our candidates to respond. Jocelyn?
Sure. And thank you, everybody, for taking the time to run. And my question is, Black and special ed students continue to be suspended and disciplined at a rate far greater than white students in our district. What would you as a board member do to address the discrepancy?
Okay, thank you. Let's start, uh, we're going to start with you this time, Courtney.
The first thing that I want to say, and I want to be very, very clear when I say this. If I'm elected to the Board of Education, I want to work with my counterparts on the board and call for an immediate moratorium for all out-of-school suspensions, K to 12 in South Orange and Maplewood. We have a crisis on our hand that is directly contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline for many of our students. Research has extensively studied the impact of out-of-school suspensions and has shown that students not only feel less disconnected to their community, are more likely are more likely to repeat whatever infraction got them suspended in the first place, but most of those students are less likely to matriculate on time and ultimately graduate on time. Suspensions do not do anything to solve problems in our community. They kick the can down the road and they do not reflect the values that I know this community holds. I want to see us immediately put a stop to those to begin to investigate what the underlying causes of these disparities and suspensions are and put together supports in place so that all of our students can participate in collaborative problem solving that will empower them to be more productive citizens here and when they graduate.
Thank you, Courtney. Let's move to Alyssa on this question.
So I agree with Courtney and I would support something like that because we, the studies have shown that suspensions don't work, that we need to do better. Our code of conduct right now is not, does not, needs to be reviewed and revamped because we are seeing that it is not working right. I mean, we're still suspending Black and Brown kids like they should. I am happy with the lawsuit because the lawsuit, it was something that I was very passionate about, making sure it was included in the settlement, was the fact that we are now going to have to report out those numbers. We have not done that in the past and we must because we need to see the data and we need, the board needs to be able to question why is this happening? And how do we fix this? We spent so much time on restorative justice training, but we're not using it in our schools. We must look at ways to make sure that we are doing, to doing things that are rehabilitating our students and not penalizing them. We have a drug policy right now that kids get suspended when they are caught with drugs. But if we did something where we include, allowed them to be in, put into rehabilitation services, that could solve some of the issues that we're having. We need to rehabilitate.
Thank you. Your response, Melanie Finner?
I think this goes back to starting in the early schools, right? Like, are we supporting kids who need their support, whether it be emotional or educational from early on? We need to be supporting children from the get-go so that they understand that they're appreciated in our district and that they are going to be treated the same as their peers, right? They don't want to go into these early grades just knowing there's a discrepancy between them and their classmates. I think there should be those supports in place. I think we should have accountability on the framework that we evaluate teachers on, right? So like instead of handing them a paper saying, okay, you're done, good luck next year, like let's follow up and make sure they're, they're doing what's right. Like I've heard about teachers in the high school who were terrible with students and yet they're still teaching in the high school. So, so I think it's a combination of supporting the students so they don't feel left behind, but also making sure the staff is, you know, doing right by all child, all children, excuse me.
Okay, let's move to Deborah Engel.
I agree with everyone else is saying, I, we need to look at the data to figure out what's going on. We need to hold teachers, policies, administrators, schools accountable for what's going on. We need an education plan around the code of conduct so that it is implemented in each school, in each grade, in each classroom the same way. And we need to set up those channels of communications again so that people know how to report or what to do in situations. And I like Courtney's idea about suspending suspensions. I don't see a need. I mean, these are, these are children. We should be looking at restorative justice practice. We should be looking at mental health for all of our children. We should be looking at other ways in order to create an equitable classroom for all of our students.
Okay, and the last response comes from Susan Bergen on this question.
Thank you. Last year, in the South Orange Maplewood School District, twice as many Black students were suspended as white students, even though Black students make up about a third of the population. And this is why Courtney and I have been discussing calling for a moratorium on suspensions if we're elected to the board next year. The district presented some data in the spring about violence, substance abuse and him, harassment, intimidation and bullying. But the data was really noticeable for lacking any information about gender, race and IEP status of the students involved. And it also swung wildly from year to year, which suggested, according to Dr. Taylor, that there was some sort of issue with the record keeping. So I think we really need to have a moratorium on suspensions and get better data and information to try to assess what is going on before we think about bringing those back.
Thank you all for your responses and Jocelyn, thank you for that question. Our next question comes from eight-year-old Tuscan school student, Ally Scherzer. Ally, are you there?
Yeah.
Great, hi Ally. Would you mind reading your question for everyone to hear and then we'll let the candidates respond?
What will you do when children go back to school and make it safer for them?
Okay, thank you, Ally. Let's start with Courtney. You want to respond to that?
Sure. Ally, thank you so much for your question. This is a question that my eight-year-old and my 10-year-old ask me probably every other day because they are really, really itching to get back into their classrooms. They love their school and they miss their friends. You know, the first thing that we have to do is we have to make sure it's safe. You know, the most important responsibility that we have as parents and the most important responsibility we have as potential board members is to make sure that each and every one of our school buildings is safe for each and every one of our kids. And so we're going to listen to the scientists and the doctors because they know a whole lot more than any of us do who are running for these roles. And we're going to make sure that, that thing, when things are really, really safe, we're going to make sure that we get you, Ally, and all of your friends back into school so that you can learn together and in person. Because we know that, that you're doing your best, probably working at home and, and doing your best on all of the computer classes that you're taking right now. But at the end of the day, I know you want to get back in school, just like my kids do.
Thank you, Courtney. Alyssa, your response, please.
Sure. Ally, I loved your question. And when I see someone your age asking a question like that, it makes me smile and gives me hope for the future. The thing is, we don't ask the students, what do you need to feel safe? What will make you feel safe? We're a bunch of people up here talking, the adults are talking, but we don't ask the students, what will they need? I know that, I believe that for our students to feel safe and secure, we need to do a better job with making sure we have the ventilation and the PPE necessary to make that happen. We need to make sure that we are social distancing and everyone's wearing masks. And I know that you guys are doing a great job in doing that at home. But we, but I really want to hear what you guys need. We never ask our students what they need. We have to start by doing that. So what I would do on the board is I would make sure that I was asking the students and the parents, what do they need to feel safe? What information do they need?
Okay, thank you. Melanie, your response to that question?
I'm going to waste my first 10 seconds by saying, Ally, you used to play with my daughter Juliette at the YMCA aftercare. So I sent her to her room and hopefully she's sleeping, but 134 people in the school don't care, but I just want you to know that. Listen, half of this I want earmuffs for. The number one thing to make it safe for kids to go to school is I think we need the emotional supports for the kids for when they get back to school because I don't even know how this is going to go. I have a kindergartner and I feel like he's basically learning like back from the womb. So I don't know how emotionally he's going to be able to like leave me and go into a school building. That being said, why has it taken so long for our school's infrastructure to be, first of all, it's not even ready yet. But had we addressed these plans years ago, our schools would have been safer for our kids to go into now in a hybrid way. And they're not. Why is that? That's what I want to know.
Okay, Deborah, your thoughts?
Hi, hi Ally, nice to see you. I 100% agree with what Melanie just said about the emotional support. I think that we're going through a pandemic right now. We don't know what our children are thinking. We don't know what our, you know, for any grade level, from the elementary schools, middle school, high school, everyone is going through enormous changes and I'm sure it's really confusing. And I think that we need to start looking at our mental health supports and making them opt out instead of opt in. I think we should be having all children talking to our social workers just to make sure that they're okay. Because, you know, Ally, you know my kids, but they don't talk to me that much. You probably know about more of what's going on in their heads than I do. So they need somebody who's not their parent and not their sibling to be talking to them. We're doing assessments on academics to make sure there's no gaps, but we're not doing assessments on the mental health. And I think it's super duper important. The other thing is, I want to make sure our schools are safe. And I'm sad that we have not been, have received no communications about what is going on with our schools to make them safe. I see no work being done at Tuscan. I don't know what's happening there. And in order for our kids to go back to school safely, we need our buildings to be fixed. So, and we need to make sure there's soap in the bathrooms as well. So that would be my answer.
Okay, and the last response from Susan Bergen?
Hi, Ally, it's so great to see you. I just hope you know that we all really want you guys to be able to go back to school, but we're not going to do it until we know that it's safe for you to go back. And I know that your mom is a lawyer. I'm a lawyer also, and I'm a healthcare lawyer, which means I used to work for hospitals. And part of my job would be reading all the stuff that applies for hospitals to help figure out how we could make sure we were following all the rules. And if I'm on the board, I'll make sure that we're following all the rules before you go back to school.
Okay, thank you so much, Susan. And Ally, thank you for staying up to ask that thoughtful question. We are now at 8:57. We promised we'd be finishing up at nine o'clock. So rather than taking an additional question, I'm now going to turn it over for the closing remarks from each candidate. I'm going to ask if you can limit those remarks to a minute each. And let's start with Courtney.
I just want to thank everybody again for coming tonight. It is so inspiring.
Interrupt for one second. It's actually a minute and a half. Well, I was cutting it so that we didn't run over Carol, but if you want them to... They prepared for a minute and a half. Okay, thank you. Okay, so you guys got the last word. You've got your full minute and a half. And we encourage everyone to stick with us a little bit past nine. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to just thank again the Schools Committee for hosting and for everybody coming out to listen to some of the different views we have on the questions that were asked. I think it means a lot that we have a community that's so involved and so engaged. And, you know, it's part of the reason why my husband and I wanted to move here and it makes me even more excited by the potential we have as a community to really move on some important issues here. You know, they say that all politics is local, but I think when we have a time and living in a time where we have a president who refuses to denounce white supremacy and a vice president who denies even the existence of systemic racism, local politics could not be more high stakes. Because it's not enough for us as a community to make proclamations that affirm Black life. We have the potential as a community to ensure a broader anti-racist agenda that actually has the potential to affirm all of our incredible students here in South Orange and Maplewood, but in particular, make good on closing longstanding oppressive opportunity gaps that have plagued many of our students for generations. I think we have the right leader in place in Dr. Taylor, who is assembling an absolutely outstanding team. And I think our job as board members, if we are elected, is to not just support him, but push and challenge him. And I think my particular educational expertise as a leader and as a policy leader is the right expertise needed to not only support him when he's doing a good job, but to challenge and fill in gaps to ensure that it has the right impact.
Thank you, Courtney. And your closing for Alyssa Malaspina?
Sorry, hit mute again by accident. I view activism in the following ways. First is symbolic, like displaying a lawn sign, which raises awareness and shows support without having much else to do. The second is passive, having general conversations about a cause, trying to learn how to better advocate, but not quite ready to actively participate in a way that advances the cause. Third is active, protesting and pursuing actions that aren't necessarily popular and could potentially spell trouble for the people participating. There is nothing wrong with any of these models and SMMSD has no shortage of the first two. But I've worked hard to be an active advocate that will continue to work hard to push the district to do better. I've successfully lobbied the district main saying staffing levels for our school libraries, provided transitional, better transitional supports for special education students between grades, provided pay for parents and others during the COVID pandemic, and helped to bring additional supports to the CHS. In addition, my husband and I chose to join a legal action brought by the Black Parents Workshop. This legal action was recently settled and brings historic changes that will provide the necessary framework for how the district moves forward with integration, while helping to close the equity gap that has persisted for far too long. Our district has so much to offer, but it often falls short for too many students. We can do better. Again, thank you for watching tonight and I ask you to vote for me, Alyssa Malaspina, row one for Board of Education.
Thank you, Alyssa. Let's move to Melanie Finner.
So in the beginning, I didn't explain that I am actually freelance art director. I am a graphic, I'm a yoga teacher. And I realize that I have a different professional background than most Board of Ed candidates. But if there's one thing I've learned through this campaign process and through watching meetings and attending meetings and watching more old meetings, is that what you do for a living doesn't necessarily correlate to a successful Board of Ed member. We need board members who are going to drive progress forward, not do the job for the administrators. And I think we need a fresh perspective in this district. We need parents that are committed, who have skin in the game, who want to see things through and see progress actually be made and not just talk about it and debate about it year after year. And so I'm hoping to just be a voice of the community, a voice for all the parents that who don't have the nerve or the time to step out there and do it themselves. So I'm hoping you consider me regardless of my lack of, as you speak, or, you know, maybe, maybe I've flicked my hair too many times, but I really have our children's and everybody's children's best interest in mind here.
Thank you. Deborah Engel, your closing remarks?
Thank you to the Coalition on Race for having this event and for all of you for joining to learn more about me and my fellow candidates. I know how busy we all are managing many children's remote schedules, I'm a working parent managing my career and dealing with all the snacks and the dishes and everything going on during this pandemic. I started thinking about running for the Board of Education when the schools closed this spring. But what convinced me to run was the upcoming intentional integration plan. Our district needs to have strong communications to settle our anxious community as we continue to pivot through this pandemic, plan to reopen the schools and implement the integration plan in the fall. I've met and connected to so many of our community members by running the South Orange Holiday pop-up shops, pop-up shops for the past two years, from building my businesses, work and play in General Store Cooperative, from serving in a leadership role in the Village Center Alliance. And I really feel like I know this community and I'm a mom in this community for 11 years. I want to serve on the Board of Education to advocate for all of you. I'm not afraid to use my voice. I pride myself on bringing people together and building consensus. I promise to listen and learn and remember that every single one of us wants the same thing for our children. We want a strong, equitable education for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. And the last closing remark comes from Susan Bergen.
Thank you so much to the Schools Committee for hosting tonight and for everyone for tuning in. I've been working towards equity in our schools for years. I've collaborated with the district and community members to get results for our students. I'm running to bring my commitment, knowledge of this district and legal and policy background to the board to have a broader impact. Some of the things I've worked on in the district are the Cougar Cares Program, which I started to feed hungry Columbia High School students at school and on weekends. Together with the Parenting Center, I made sure every student in our district will receive a real school lunch, even if their lunch accounts are empty. The senior fund I launched with the Columbia HSA has increased participation in senior events like prom by almost 100 students a year. I advocated for the board to revise the punitive fines policy that prevented students who owe money from going to school events and even receiving their diploma. And my winning proposal last year led to Maplewood's creation of a free neighborhood Wi-Fi program around Seth Boydin to start to bridge our digital divide. I get things done. These projects arose out of volunteering in our schools and listening to what parents, teachers and students had to say. Achieving these results took persistence and a deep understanding of how the board and the district work. I've read 74 pages of the board bylaws, twice. I have the skills to read budgets, analyze data and craft policies to drive change. My perspective as a healthcare lawyer will be especially useful as we navigate or return to the classroom. I've been both a partner of and an advocate before the district. An effective board member needs to be both. When we collaborate and tap into the resources and expertise in our towns and schools, there's no limit to what we can do for our students. Please use two of your precious votes for Bergen and Wingfield, positions three and four in the back of the ballot. You can visit BergenWingfield2020.com to learn more about us also. And thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, Susan, and thanks to all of the candidates. I will now turn the mic over to Nancy Gagné, our Executive Director of the Coalition, to close us off for the evening. Nancy?
I, thank you. I'm going to be really fast because I'm just so thrilled that so many of you have come out tonight or come to your computers tonight. So thank you to the schools... So thank you to the Schools Committee who work so hard year in, year out for racial equity and inclusion and integration in the district. Thank you to the candidates. It's a difficult job. I've been there. I've done it. And campaigning is not fun. The work is very rewarding and it's just wonderful to see so many talented people stepping up and vying for the job. And thank you again to the audience for giving us your time and attention. You know what you have to do, which is vote. Share the information you've learned here. And if you are interested in equity and inclusion in our school district, consider joining the Schools Committee. And also, we do have conversations on race coming up next week. Please register for that on our website, communitycoalitiononrace.org. And again, thank you for sticking with us tonight.